Here we go. So, good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the November twenty second, twenty twenty two, Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. And I'd just like to remind us of our guiding principles, which are, are we raising the bar? Are we honoring the past but not living in the past? Are we building connections with outside partners? And is the decision making process we're about to to contact this evening positively impacting diversity, equity, and inclusion? Please join me in in the fudgable allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with whatever clear justice for all.
We actually have a special guest in the audience tonight. He's hiding in the back room. Sean, you want to come out of the back room and introduce yourself? Come up to the podium if you'd like. Sean Dunham is our newly hired IT manager. Steve Habertz retiring. So all your devices when they don't work, this is the guy you're looking for. And but to welcome Sean, Sean joins us from the Port Myers area of Florida and has been here in town about three weeks, two weeks.
About three weeks, yeah, three weeks now, from the west coast of Florida.
So welcome.
About as far as I could get from there.
So what what brings you up this way?
I've always loved this part of the country. A couple of childhood friends that live on the other side of Seattle. Just fantastic area and kind of saw Port Orchard online and lots of reviews and pictures and so on. And just fell in love with the town. Just love the feel of it. Loved exploring it for the last couple of weeks with my fiancee. And everyone here has been so welcoming and it's just been fantastic. So welcome, welcome. I appreciate everyone.
You'll be losing your tan, you know.
Lots of humanity, apparently.
It turns to rust. Don't worry.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Sean. All right, we have a published agenda. And are there any modifications this evening?
Yeah, one mayor like to add item E to our consent agenda, and that would be the excusal of council member Mark Trenary for personal reasons.
Second motion by Councilor for Charlie, a second by Councilmember Deaner to excuse Councilmember Trenary for personal reasons. And that is being added as consent item four E. Any discussion of that? You're none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, and that has been added to the consent agenda. Any other modifications to this evening's agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Clausen.
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Luca Reli to approve the modified agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You're none, the agenda has been set for this evening. We are to our first citizen comment period this evening. The first of which is for any item on items on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address the council? There's a second citizen comment period for any other items. So if you're wishing to address items on the agenda, you can address the council if it's for an item on the agenda.
This isn't for any items on the agenda. I have a disability and before I've addressed it, the council, they allowed me to make my statements or comments at the beginning of the meeting, which allows me, you know, because it's harder for me to be making comments and stuff later on.
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to the rules of procedure, the council would need to vote to waive the requirement that the items during this period are for items on the or the the comment period is for items on the agenda. The council is free as it is your meeting, free to modify your rules however you see fit.
I'm just asking for the ADA. You know, making making some kind of accommodations and he allowed me to do it before.
Okay, I'm struggling with seeing how the the ADA aspect of it, but all the part of the council, whether you wish to suspend your rules and then you would need to make a motion and then vote on suspending those rules. Councilmember Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to suspend the rules and allow the comment.
Second.
A motion and a second to suspend the rules for this evening. Is there any discussion of suspending those rules? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Rules have been suspended for this evening. So certainly have your three minutes. Please identify yourself for the record.
And Stanley Smith. I have two comments to make. One is the homeless issue that's going on. I'm have I'm a business person. I have property on Bay Street. And we constantly have people with their RVs coming in disability. I mean, excuse me. Homeless people coming in there, parking there with their RVs and they stay there for weeks. And I addressed the police and they were saying that there really not too much they can do. This has been an ongoing thing. And I did go down there yesterday and talked to them. Can you put a sign up in these places, public that they cannot park RVs? And then they thought maybe that would address the problem. Because otherwise they 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 they're there for weeks on the end. And if they do, then they'll leave for a couple hours or just a little bit and come back and then it gives them another period of time where they can stay there. This is this isn't. It's not helping my business. It's not helping me. I'm looking in the future develop possibly, and this is really having an impact on on what's happening. Another issue I'd like to ask is what's what's going on with the the bike trail that's going on there? Are they going to raise that that bank up? It's my understanding, I thought they were going to raise it up two feet to prevent the water from coming over. And it's and last year, the water high tide started coming over the the road. And when it floods, my place is going to flood the malls. It's going to go right downtown. So I'd like to know what the council is doing to address that issue. The other issue is the homeless issue that's going on. I've been at these homeless camps. I wish that the council members would go there. It's it's unbelievable. Yeah, you got the drugs. You got, you know, when they when they go to the bathroom, they just dig a hole. And that's where they do it. They can go any place they want. They just move from one area to the other. I want to know what the city is doing to prevent this from happening. And it's it's seems to be getting worse. So for me, as a developer or what, I have to follow codes. I have to build, you know, toilets and everything for everybody to use, and it has to be by code. They just go and they dig a hole and that's where they do it. They're able to shoot up. And I understand there's been murders. There's been propane tanks blow up. So I'd like to know what is the city going to do to address that issue too? Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to address the city council? For hopefully for items on the agenda? Seeing no other, have anyone online, Brandon? See anybody? Raise your hand feature and you'd be allowed to address the council. I see no hands raised. So we will move on to our business items. So the first is our consent modified consent agenda. Is there a motion to Councilmember Clausen?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmore Clausen, a second by Councilmember Kachardi to approve the modified consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We have two presentations this evening. The first of which is a presentation by our by our city lobbyist from Gordon Thomas Honeywell. It's our twenty twenty three legislative agenda. So Josh, please step to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. Nice to see you all.
Just move that microphone just a little closer so we.
There we go. Is that all right? Is that better?
Much better. Okay, good deal.
I'm Josh Wees. With me is Annika Von, where was Gordon Thomas Honeywell, where you're lobbyists down in Olympia and I'm going to be very brief tonight. So if we can go ahead, thank you so much. Go to the next slide. We're just going to talk quickly about what we're getting ready for for the legislative session. You can keep going. Thank you. Very briefly, just for context, this is the long legislative session, one hundred and five days. The legislature will be considering their biennial budget, so they're they're longer two-year budgets. We're not anticipating a whole lot of activity in the transportation budget, but we do think there will be operating budget and capital budget opportunities because we are still seeing actually healthy revenue growth projected into next biennium, though things are slowing down. A lot of turnover. There's going to be a lot of legislators that we're going to have that are new that we're going to spend some time on city issues and getting them on the issue that we I think you all have seen now the result of the election when we did this PowerPoint. It's actually changed since then. And I should note that there are still some recounts that are going to happen. It's pretty unlikely at this point that things change, but it will be fifty eight to forty Democratic control in the House and then twenty nine twenty in the Senate. So the Democrats actually picks up a seat in both the House and the Senate. And we know that there's going to be a lot of discussion this session around housing, the issues that you just from the gentleman from the citizens from citizen that homelessness issues, we're hearing that across the state. Behavioral health is tied into that, continuing investments in those subject matter areas. And then the legislature reassessing their response to the Supreme Court decision on the Blake case, whether or not simple possession of drugs will be a crime or whether or not it will remain basically decriminalized. The tax structure work group has been working for several years. They'll be bringing back some recommendations to legislature about possible ways to make the state tax structure more equitable. Two things to note in that, the one recommendation that they probably will be considering is whether to change the BNO tax from a from a gross tax to a net margins tax. So that would be a pretty significant and difficult change, could potentially have some impact on city BNO taxes. But really unclear that that will go forward. That could possibly be the kind of bill that takes two or even three years to get through just because it's so complicated. And also just be aware that they have voted to continue to assess what changing the one percent cap on property taxes for local governments would do. So that that could be a discussion of the legislature this session as well. We do think we'll be back in person. That's all the indications that we're getting at this point. We think there will continue to be opportunities for individuals to testify remotely. It's going to be really hard for the legislature to put the sort of the genie back in the bottle now that the the citizens across the state have had the opportunity to testify from anywhere. I think that that will still be a predominant way of participating committee hearings. So we have been working with the mayor and and I think we've talked with you even once already that's about some of the possible topics for session. This is what's in front of you for our draft legislative priorities. We do still, even though we don't think there will be a lot of activity in the transportation budget, we do think it is still a good idea to highlight the need for those roundabouts on Sedgwick. We've been very consistent requesting those dollars. And we do know that over the next several years that making amendments and programming out the move ahead Washington transportation package is going to be really a lot of the discussion in the transportation world. There may be opportunities. And if there are, we want to be ready to take advantage of those opportunities. We also have a proposal for that will request two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for some resources to coordinate the signalization between the state signals and the city signal there that will have a positive impact on traffic congestion, though doesn't require the full six million dollar investment, six million last time we estimated it for the two roundabouts. The second item, I actually, we've had the foster pilot program on your legislative agenda for several several years now. The foster task force has been working. It is wrapping up in the next several weeks here and will be making recommendations to the legislature. One of the recommendations from those from the task force is actually based upon a dream that you had as a city and doing the pilot project. And that really is the discrepancy that there are between the hydrogeologic models in a number of cases. And what do you do when a model shows that there is theoretically impact, but there's no real way to show that there's actual impact on streams, particularly that are very far away? That that will be, there's going to be two things going on around foster. One is what I'm going to call the big bill, which is coming out of the task force, implementing the task force recommendations. That modeling issue will be included in that bill. There's sort of a second track that we're looking at too, and that is really making sure that you as a city, as a pilot project, now that the task force is sunsetting, that you still see some path forward as a pilot project that is unique from any other city in the state for the investments that you've made in those pilot in that pilot well and getting some help with your water rates that you need transferred. We're working closely with the mayor. The city's water rates attorney and staff and that when I I'm going to say at this point, I don't know exactly what the path forward is because it's really going to depend on what that big bill looks like and sort of how the environment changes through the session, but that's going to be one of our major goals. I think I said this, but just to be clear, this unlike prior years where this has been a little bit of a sleeper item on our agenda, I think we're going to spend a lot of time on this subject matter this session. It is it is the ripe year for it. Port Orchard, like lots of other cities across the state and like the Association of Washington Cities, is highlighting the need to amend the law on vehicular pursuits for law enforcement and really needed to make sure that we have some clear standard and some ability for law enforcement to engage in vehicular pursuits. And the legislature has pretty much removed that authority. And we're wanting to highlight the need to bring some level of authority back. The community event center, we don't anticipate a request at this point. We received capital budget money two sessions ago. I know we're still in the process of using those resources. We really want to highlight with our legislative delegation, in particular, the fact that we probably will be coming back next year in all likelihood for some resources to two years for some construction with that project. Just really wanting to keep it on our delegation and on legislators' minds because it is really the the sort of key capital investment in the community at this point. We have public records reform. This is really an opportunistic item. Want to make sure the legislature remembers that we still really do at the municipal level need some help with really harassing public records requests. And if similar to what I said before, if there's opportunities, we want to be ready to take advantage of those opportunities to make some some amendments. You again, making sure that there's like last year, that if there are bills proposed that are going to be telling you how to deal with housing density, that cities still continue to have a voice in that. And I know the mayor's, as president of AWC, has been really engaged in that work that AWC will be putting forward a positive proposal. So, you know, this one will be, I think there will be some energy that goes into that as well. And then finally, last but certainly not least, just, you know, again, homelessness, substance use disorder and mental health issues that we're seeing across the state. I'm really wanting to encourage the legislature to continue. In particular, continue to fund those programs and invest in those issues. It is, I will just say it is much bigger than, I think you know this, than the city of Port Orchard. Second, problems across the state with that. So that's what we're proposing for you. At this, you know, at this point, next steps, we do need to meet with your new legislative delegation. Looking very much forward to working with Representative-elect Hutchins. And I think that'll be a good change, but want to get with all the legislators and talk with them about these priorities. Next week, that is next week will be end of next week is Legislative Committee Assembly. Legislators will be in person down in Olympia en masse for the first time since the pandemic. There'll be a good opportunity as they're doing committee restructuring and leadership restructuring. Good time to talk to them and just catch them in the halls like we usually do. And then we'll see the governor's proposed budget mid-December. I think we're hearing around the sixteenth, but we'll see and we'll give you a report on what's included in the governor's proposal. If there's anything on these priorities that is of particular interest. And session starts on the ninth, and we will look forward this year since we will be back in session to have in the mayor and any interested council members down to Olympia to help us push on these items. So I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer questions or if there's anything you'd like me to elaborate on, I'd be happy to do that.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, just a question. I want to make sure that our plan for the community center is just basically provide information and not request additional funding.
Yes, that's right.
And and the reason is that we, if we got money this cycle, we won't be ready to spend it under the timelines that the legislature would require. So we're more, hey, we've got the, don't forget about the community center. And in two years, we're going to be back for a significant request for that.
Then I would suggest or offer, I know that the Port of Bremerton is going to be looking to the state for some additional funding. They were not successful in their grand ask for additional funding. They need to replace the breakwater downtown. And not that we should be carrying the torch, but at least we should be supporting their request and effort. So I would suggest that we at least include something to just supporting their request.
I like that.
Making a note here. And so is Josh.
I bet Annika's too.
It's the breakwater project.
Yeah.
I hope. And of course, we were supportive of that and we but their requests have been rather large the last few times. So hopefully they've got a better handle on how they can structure this and put it together. And that's for that's for them to figure out how how much they ask for and and of course, we wouldn't stand in the way of that and would support that.
Exactly. As I said, I don't think it's our place to carry the torch for him, but at least support. Yeah, whatever the request is because it will benefit the city.
Yep, it's in our downtown. That's right.
And I'll add that it's a popular walking feature for people and if you walk those dogs, you'll see they're in pretty rough shape.
Any other thoughts, questions? And of course, we know, I think it's on our legislative agenda is on here tonight. You know, AWC has a number of priorities to it and they'll be voting on at their next board meeting, which is in December. And I have an idea that and they're pretty similar to this. You know, defending against the mandates, pursuits, the in particular, the homelessness issues and, you know, providing resources for you know, treatment options, Blake, Blake decision.
Pursuits.
And pursuits, yeah. So it looks very similar to ours.
So we need to put a support statement in there.
It's on our, it's already on there. Yeah, and we'll just add the Port of Bremerton one. Actually, we'll do that. We'll just have you when we adopt this this evening, we'll we'll have you add that to it.
Yeah.
Form formally, and then we'll capture that.
I don't need anything that specifically says support AWC. So you say it in here?
Yes, it is on the document.
So it's, we've got a one pager somewhere. Yes, anybody very concerned, I suspect it would be you, mayor. So. Yeah. Yep, the very last sentence. We're supporting. There are things AWC. You know, because the cities as representing the cities as a whole that that we aren't going to champion and cheer lead, but most of most of the things we are. So.
Other questions or comments? Go ahead, Fred. Can you tell me a little more about the public records reform? Was there anything specific to Port Orchard or are we just part of the other municipalities and state?
It's more to the latter. Um, yeah, it's more to the latter. Okay.
Yeah, we're we're not hopeful, though, that the newspaper industry sends to to bite us on that. And right, I'm not, excuse me, that's the different issue.
That's noticing.
Yeah, to noticing, but.
Yeah. There has not been much traction, as you probably remember, from the legislature on public records. And, you know, when you talk to municipalities across the state, the issue in Port Orchard is not different in this regard. The issue is not the, you know, everyday resident that wants some documents, you know, with some infrequency. It's the, you know, examples of the ex-boyfriend who is requesting documents relating to their former, you know, and they're clearly just no, no good legitimate public purpose except to either harass an individual or in many cases to make money through the Public Records Act.
And then there's the element out there that the folks that make money at the at public municipalities not meeting deadlines. Yep. And, you know, the end of litigation that comes from that.
So this reminds me, there there, has there been any discussion of the privacy, a portion of public records? For example, if you put in a request, your information is then publicly available. We had a business in town that had was the object of several public records requests. Because they had apparently not closed during the pandemic. And they chose to print the reporters' addresses, names and phone numbers on a list on their restaurant. And I just wondered if that was really the intent of the Public Records Act to be used to harass the person making making the request.
The intent on the Public Records Act, as it stated in the law, is really broad. It's basically for transparency. And to make sure that, you know, as I'm sure everybody agrees, make sure that governments are responsive to the citizens. But it doesn't really go beyond, doesn't go to specifics about what it is and isn't for. There are exemptions, of course, for, you know, personal health records, those types, some of those types of records, but otherwise nothing that you're speaking of.
Other questions? Go ahead.
So a popular talk topic is housing affordability, and I'm just wondering if if you have any sort of idea or preview of what we might see this legislative session?
I can talk with the housing task force that I've been on and sharing, actually. We've been in negotiations with the governor's office and the legislature on a package that AWC is is in the cities as a whole or can be comfortable with. And the governor's office is pushing hard on density. And that if if we make every single family lot able to have a fourplex on it that will solve this housing problem and the issue is much, in our opinion, much more complex than that. And for affordability is a big element than in that. And we're asking, in our proposal, we're asking for money for subsidized housing, we think is part of the equation too. But we'll see where that goes.
Yeah, much like homelessness, there's multiple fronts you need to take on it. Yes.
Yeah.
And I do think if I might just add, I think it'll be safe to say that most of the action will be around those density proposals. But I think you will see, you know, soup to nuts, different types of proposals that are intended to also help on affordability and a variety of issues, whether there is big an issue or gaining so much attention, probably not, but probably lots of proposals.
Complex issue, though.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Josh? All right, we're going to move on to our next presentation.
Thank you.
And Brandon, if you could promote Nick, he's a panel area. You did that. And Nick is going to give us a presentation on our development activity this one.
Can I say something before he starts? So it's interesting when you see the numbers, but when you see this presentation, it is really eye opening and amazing. So it's it's pretty.
Hard to imagine.
All right. All right. Good evening, council and mayor. I was asked to give this presentation this evening. This actually originated at the Planning Commission when one of the planning commissioners had indicated that they're getting questions about development activity around town and they're not familiar with what projects are happening and where those projects are located. And so in response to the Planning Commission's request, I put together this presentation and then when I shared it with the mayor, he asked that I also present this to you tonight. So I'm going to walk you through activity that's ongoing in Port Orchard and we're going to go counterclockwise, starting in McCormick Village and ending up closer to downtown. The we were very fortunate that the Kitsap County updated a lot of aerial photography in the last several months. In addition, Google Maps released some new aerial imagery that was temporarily available and then has since disappeared. But we have some photo, some aerial photos that are two and three months old that really give you the most recent picture of what's actually happening on the ground. And so I'm going to walk you through a number of projects taking place in the city right now. So the first project, and can everybody see my screen? All right. So the first area I want to touch on is the McCormick Village area. On the right side of the page here, this is McCormick Village Park. There's the new roundabout on Old Clifton Road. And then when you head north from that roundabout, you're heading into the McCormick Village area. The area on the west side of the site is eighty-four lots and nearly every one of those lots has a house on it at this point in time, either under construction or or completed. That was the McCormick Village Phase One project approved by a city council a few years ago. That was the final plot approval. You have roads now complete and. You have roads now complete and a final plat recorded on McCormick Village Division Two, which is sixty-six lots located here along Yarrow Street. And then there's two additional phases. You can see all of the earth moving activity that's been taking place further to the north. And unless you drive out there, you probably aren't aware that this is taking place, but there are another thirty-eight and forty lots respectively. To the south of Yarrow, between Old Clifton and Yarrow Street, is an area of the McCormick Urban Village. That is going to include commercial development as well as some more missing middle housing types. And so the first phases of the commercial development and about half of the residential units are now in for permitting. And we're expecting groundbreaking on that area in the spring. So you'll see, I, I think McCormick is really interested in getting the commercial spaces finished as an amenity to help. Promote the, the sale of lots in other areas of, of the McCormick Master Plan. Uh, this is the imagery from our, our comprehensive plan showing this commercial area closer to Old Clifton. Just to refresh your memory of, of what's being discussed. Everything, um, there's a wetland in the middle of the site. So everything east of the wetland is going first. The, the areas west of the wetland have, have not, they have not applied for permits for that area just yet. Moving on to McCormick West, this is the area south of the roundabout, the new roundabout on Old Clifton Road. And this connects through to McCormick Woods Drive at the south. And you can access it from the north from Old Clifton Road. There are four divisions under construction at this time. Divisions eleven and twelve have all received final plat approval from the City Council. Divisions thirteen and fourteen are doing their utility work and will be installing their curbs and streets and sidewalks here. In the next two or three months, and I would expect that Division thirteen will come to City Council for final plat approval next winter. So roughly a hundred lots per division, so four hundred lots total. And they are, um, they are actively building houses in divisions eleven and twelve at this time. As a reminder, McCormick West includes a total of fifteen hundred lots. So there are about a thousand seventy remaining lots that are not yet under construction and which will be getting underway in, in the coming years. But the, the updated aerial photos really show the, the scale of this. Compared to the existing areas of McCormick Woods to the east. And if anyone has any questions as we're going through this, feel free to stop and ask questions. Um, the next area I want to talk about is Stetson Heights. I think you're all familiar with this area. We are anticipating that the Phase Three final plat for Stetson Heights will come forward to the City Council here in December. There are now a total of four hundred and twelve lots within the entire development, about eighty or so lots have completed homes on them. The most recent phase, Stetson Ridge, just went to the Hearing Examiner on the eighth of November. And we're expecting a decision on that preliminary plat for the final hundred and eight lots here in the near future. And we would expect that they're going to build that subdivision beginning in the spring. Now we're going to get into some multifamily areas. At the corner of Sedgwick and Sydney is the Sinclair Apartments Phase Two Project. This is actually three apartment buildings plus a drive-through coffee shop. The ground floor units of the apartment buildings are actually live work units where you can have a commercial space and either live in that space. Or convert the entire space to commercial. Um, I would expect that those are going to be used as residential spaces initially. And you may see some of them convert at some point in the future, but there is the possibility that people can run. A, a home business out of a storefront in the, the front of those units. So that's sixty-three units at that intersection. The next project, Haven Apartments and Haven Town Homes is located at Huvde and Sydney Road Southwest. The, um, the area east of Sydney includes two hundred and thirty-six apartments. And the first three of those buildings are now complete and have occupancy. They are about to get occupancy on the next couple of apartment buildings. There was one hurdle from the development agreement that we had to clear before they could get occupancy, but they are leasing. And nearing completion on that project. Across the street from this apartment complex is another project called the. The, these are actually some photos of the finished apartment building and the, uh, the amenity building for the, the main apartment complex. And then across the street. Near the intersection of Glenwood and Sydney and across from Huvde is the Haven Town Homes Project. And we have now issued the building permits on this project. It's a hundred and fourteen townhome units. And they actually share the amenity building across the street with the apartment complex. So anybody who rents a townhome can, can cross the street and use the gym, the common space and the, the swimming pool. So that's an additional hundred and fourteen units that will be breaking ground. They wanted to wait out the wet season so they didn't have erosion control problems. And I expect them to break ground probably in February. Um, moving to the east side of Highway sixteen are a couple of subdivisions. The Blueberry Plat, which was renamed as Magnolia Ridge. We have now issued a building permit on all one hundred and six lots. And just about all of those permits issued this year in twenty twenty-two. The Geiger Plat, which is located a little bit to the southwest, is another forty-six lots. And I think there's three or four homes under construction at this point in time, but that one is definitely moving a little bit slower. In terms of the rate of, of building permit issuance, but there are several pending building permits in that subdivision. And you should see that built out over the next year or a year and a half. Um, moving down Sedgwick, this is next to the, um, the gym. And just before you get to Fred Meyer, um, we're calling this the Myers-Sedgwick Project. It is a phased project and the first phase includes a coffee shop. It's a drive-through, uh, coffee shop and we believe this is likely to be a Starbucks. They have additional pads that they have designed for mixed-use apartment buildings. And so you can see they're out there, um, they started clearing this site in September. They've put in some, uh, some stormwater infiltration facilities. And the, um, the future mixed-use phase of the project, they have not yet applied for the, um, building permits. They have applied for a multifamily tax exemption. And this is one of the first buildings we're seeing in the city with parking beneath the building rather than relying exclusively on surface parking. Just to the east of Fred Meyer, the Pottery Creek Apartments were completed earlier this year. That was a hundred and thirty-six apartment units. There is a second phase now planned and they are, they have submitted, uh, building permit applications for all one hundred and ninety-two units. And that is in the, uh, the, the property outlined in green, just to the east of the existing complex. And they have also, I believe, requested a multifamily tax exemption for that, that project. And we expect to issue those building permits in the spring and to see groundbreaking, uh, here in the near future. Uh, next, we're moving up Bethel to the intersection of Blueberry and Bethel. And the entire block between Ramsey and Bethel along Blueberry, there is a one hundred and eight unit apartment complex. We're calling currently, uh, just the Blueberry Apartments. That is another apartment complex that has submitted building permit applications. And so they have invested real money into designing buildings and getting their permits issued. And we are nearing the completion of the review for that, and those should be ready to issue for spring construction in twenty twenty-three. Further north off of Salmon Berry is the Hidden Hills Apartment Project. There are one hundred and fifty apartments proposed at this site. They have applied for their land disturbing activity permits. They have not yet applied for building permits for their apartment complex. So this one is probably six months behind, uh, some of our other apartment projects in terms of the timing of, of when you might see construction. If you note the irregular shape of this lot, there's a, a small panhandle that, uh, abuts Salmon Berry. And then there's a larger, uh, main piece of the parcel, but a, a good chunk of that is a wetland. And so they didn't give us great graphics of what this complex looks like that are easily shared in the presentation. But the panhandle has two apartment buildings, um, uh, oriented perpendicular to the street with an access road. And then it opens up into this larger apartment complex with apartments on both sides. And then you can see the large wetland buffer, uh, where, where the wetland has been protected, uh, kind of in, in this general area of, of that site. So, um, that one is far enough along and we've been talking to the property owner about their offsite improvements. It seems like they are, um, really looking to get started and, and, um, there, there's a buyer involved in actually purchasing this entitlement. From the existing owner and we do expect this one to go forward. So the next project is a smaller project on Salmon Berry, just down the street from the, the Hidden Hills Apartments. There's twenty-eight apartment units. Um, this is a lot closer to Bethel. And the interesting thing about this site is there's two buildings, but they're dedicating an access road. And we've also been talking to Home Depot, which abuts this site. And this, they are willing to dedicate the access needed to provide the through connection to Kathy across the Home Depot site and across the Walmart site. So this is a key piece of the puzzle of making sure that we have a, a secondary circulation route parallel to Bethel. That helps take the pressure off of Bethel Road, um, provided that the, the Home Depot site, uh, also moves forward. Um, a third project on Salmon Berry, the Thimbleberry Town Homes is, um, there's twenty remaining townhome units to be constructed. They did build the first four of these units this past summer. And they had to do a binding site plan to create lots for the remaining clusters of townhomes. And so that has now been submitted and we expect that this spring, the remaining townhomes will get constructed. Um, a little further to the north, um, off of Herald, there are two major sites under construction. You can see one of them as you're driving along Land, that is the Riverstone Project, which is a single-family housing Kitsap project. That is more of the, uh, um, build your own house kind of assisted, uh, housing assistance program. And so it's similar to the Habitat for Humanity model, but run, run by Housing Kitsap. And then there's a second apartment project closer to Lundberg and Herald that includes a hundred and thirty-six apartment units. And then finally, um, at Harold and Lund, there's a triangle, uh, here in green. There's another small apartment project there that's twenty-four apartment units. And they're going to be connecting the, the Harold right of way through to Lund to help, um. Allow some of the traffic from this neighborhood to actually get to Lund without going through the very congested intersection of Bethel and, uh, and Lund. Um, next, we're moving over closer to the mall and on Mile Hill, we have the Pulisco Apartment Project, which is. Very near the high school and the high school athletic fields. It's another fifty-eight apartment units. And you can see that they have poured their foundations and are, uh, starting to go vertical with their, their construction. So all the building permits on this have been issued. Further up Mile Hill, near the Taco Bell is the Pazno Apartments, which is a fifty-seven unit apartment complex. And they are, I think the first building is fully framed and the second building is, uh, uh, probably one or two stories off the ground at this point in time. Then off of Whittier and Lovell is a, is the Overlook Apartments Phase Two and Phase Three Project, which includes another hundred and seventeen units. This project also has building permits issued. And, um, they've, they've completed most of their site grading work and are going to be working on foundations here in the very near future. And you'll see vertical construction starting in that area. Finally, the couple of projects downtown, uh, you're not seeing construction activity just yet. But the Heron's View Mixed Use Project has applied for their shoreline permits. And so, um, we are, we are continuing to process the application for this mixed-use project with a hundred and seventeen apartment units. Eight live work units and some ground floor retail. And this is at the, this is right next to the existing Kentucky Fried Chicken at, at Bethel and Bay Street. And then finally, the four twenty-nine Bay Street Project, those building permits have been issued. That owner is still working to get an agreement to clean up, uh, some of the contamination on that site before he can begin construction. He is now looking at a January twenty twenty-four start date. So I don't think you're going to see groundbreaking on this just yet, but, um, he is still intending on moving forward with the project. So that's, um, that's what's happening in Port Orchard. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Crazy.
Staggering. Sean, just, uh, if you add all that up, what's the population increase if, if these were all occupied?
I'd have to, I'd have to go through and look at the persons per household number for each apartment type. I, I haven't done that math for this, um, this batch of permits. And there's, there's actually other permits that are in that I didn't put on this presentation because I, I just don't have enough certainty about them yet. But I think you're, you're probably looking at four thousand people, um, with, with this mix, give or take. And that, and it depends whether you include all of McCormick West or just the currently under construction phases. There's, you know, there's an extra hundred, or an extra thousand lots out there that, um, will eventually happen. But I think they're going to slow down a little bit out there for the next couple of years. So we'll see, we'll see at what rate they're actually creating lots.
Other questions? Go ahead.
No, just a comment. Um, if you haven't been through McCormick West yet, uh, suggest you do. They, the density there is tremendous compared to McCormick Woods. It's very close to what they did at Parcel A upfront. Uh, they've opened the road there, uh, off of Glen Eagle, so you can roundabout, uh, the hallway. Some of the trails they're trying, they're putting in, uh, as an amenity to that, which will eventually connect with our park up there. Is, is tremendous, but growth is coming and, uh, stand by.
I think growth is here.
Probably so. You're, that's correct. It is. Other questions for Nick? Thank you, Nick.
Thanks.
Where are we getting our water?
It's pedaling fast. That's for sure. All right, we are to, uh, we're done with our presentations. We're on to the public hearing. You know, public hearing and a, a, a second and final public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget. Nick, do you have a staff report? Or excuse me, Noah?
Uh, yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. Um, so in addition to the public hearing six A is the second public hearing on the twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. In addition to the public hearing on, I presented at the Revenue Sources Hearing on October twenty-eighth. The city is required to hold a second public hearing on or before the first Monday of December. Uh, this hearing allows council to hear from public input on the proposed budget, consider those public comments and make changes as indicated, uh, by the council. Staff has noticed this public hearing in the newspaper record, uh, the Kitsap Sun, both in print and online. As well as in the Port Orchard Independent and on the city's website. The notice encourages citizens and the community organizations to participate. Or by providing the council with their input for future infrastructure priorities, public safety enhancements, cultural and recreational opportunities and other public services. Following citizens' comment, the public hearing should be closed and the council may continue deliberations of the twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. And I have attached, uh, several documents, uh, in, in the public hearing tonight. I just want to touch on a couple of those. Uh, first of all, that the total biennial budget is approximately a hundred and eighty-nine million dollars over the two-year period. Um, the biennial budget is balanced and does achieve all our fiscal policies, both on working capital and stabilization funds. Uh, we are investing approximately six point two million dollars into transportation and operations and maintenance work. We're investing nearly forty-one million dollars into our capital budget, uh, for parks, transportation, water, storm and sewer projects. And as you, uh, can tell by Mr. Bond's presentation, there's a lot of activity and projects going on. So this is a big budget, uh, a big ambitious budget with lots of work involved in it. And lastly, on, on the last page in, in the materials provided, uh, I provide the comparison against the current twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget. Uh, our twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary budget. And since we have made modifications to that, we had now have a final budget, um, with the adjustments highlighted in the far right column. And in total, the Indian fund balance for those adjustments was a reduction of about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So with that, Mayor, um, I would just open up to public comment.
Okay. So with that, I will open the public hearing on our proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget. Is anyone wishing to testify on the budget? Luis? Anybody online? Please use your raise the hand feature. And the clerk will bring you into the meeting if you wish to testify on the proposed budget. Neither one of the audience members wishes to testify, it appears. All right, with hearing, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. On the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget. We're now going to, uh, conduct our business items. The first is seven A, adoption of an ordinance, adopting the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, just continue on. Uh, as required, the City Council has held both its public hearings on the preliminary budget. On the revenue sources for the upcoming year, including consideration for possible increases in property taxes. For the record, the Finance Committee and council members, uh, met publicly to study the proposed budget and held budget interviews with the mayor and department heads. Input was sought from the full council on the proposed budget during these multiple meetings, including on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, which led to further discussion and consideration for our November eighth meeting and our November fifteenth meeting. Public hearings were all duly noticed, uh, seeking public input on the proposed budgets. And so now before you, you have a twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget, uh, which fully reflects department head requests, mayor's priorities. The input of citizens, uh, Finance Committee and City Council, as including modifications. The Council and Finance Committee, I recommend. The council and finance committee, I recommend approval of the ordinance, adopting the twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget.
Councilmember Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number zero zero X twenty-two, adopting the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget and the twenty twenty-three salary schedule.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Clausen, second by Councilmember Kuchardi. Any questions or comments? I know we've been touching this a lot, but uh Councilmember Rose Pepe.
No, I think we just need to say thanks to Mayor, Department Heads and Noah for putting this together. Uh, it's a robust budget. I think it addresses a lot of city needs, uh but also maintains our reserves. And uh I would say the chairman of the finance committee, uh Mr. Clausen probably has seen a lot of budgets over his time and this is a really good, good budget, taking us down into twenty-three and twenty-four.
Thank you. You know, we, we work hard to, you know, we have a retreat that really kind of lays the foundation, you know, usually in the end of the first quarter, beginning of the second quarter to gather you guys' priorities. When we work hard to, you know, deliver on those priorities, provided there's enough money uh to to fund all all the needs. Unfortunately, um, you know, we're seeing a lot of growth, which is bringing in revenue, which is enabling us, um, you know, to budget for and plan for a a lot of projects here and uh hopefully we'll be able to deliver on all these projects uh in in the, in the kind of mean biennium. It's, there's a lot to do. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Deaner.
I just want to echo what Jay had to say. Good work to the whole crew. This was a top-down effort when you put together a budget like this and um, so thanks to everybody who's worked on this.
Your last comments, questions? You'd be voting on the adoption of an ordinance, adopting the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the budget passes unanimously. We're to item B now, adoption of an ordinance, authorizing the positions of Deputy Finance Director, Human Resources Director and Permit Center Assistant and establishing general duties and qualifications. Ms. Lund, this is you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. As part of the budget process in which you just uh covered and addressed, the departments were able to make personnel re- requests for revisions to existing positions as well as requests for new positions. During the budget process, the finance department requested the reclassification of the position of Assistant Finance Director to Deputy Finance Director. And Human Resources requested the reclassification of the position of Human Resources Manager to Human Resources Director. These are title changes only with no change in compensation. Additionally, the Community Development Department requested that their current part-time position become a regular part-time position entitled Permit Center Assistant. That's what will allow the work currently being performed on a temporary basis to be performed on ongoing basis. The ordinance in front of you tonight would uh support these changes and establish the general duties and responsibilities for the three positions, which were included in the salary position chart um of the budget you just adopted. So happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Kuchardi.
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance establishing the positions of Deputy Finance Director, Human Resources Director and Permit Center Assistant and establishing general qualifications and duties for these positions.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kuchardi, second by Councilmember Clausen. Any questions on these positions? Two of them are just title changes. Uh, don't change this, the pay at all. It's just uh better reflecting the duties and uh responsibilities that they they currently do perform. And uh, and then, of course, as Debbie spoke to the uh, we have someone that we're borrowing from the court. Court's getting busier again and uh so they need their person back, so we need to backfill uh back in the Department of Community Development, which is very busy. Any hearing or questions? Uh, you'll be voting on adoption of an ordinance, authorizing positions of Deputy Finance Director, Human Resources Director and the Permit Center Assistant and establishing the general duties and qualifications. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Was there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance passes. We're to item C, adoption of an ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget. Mr. Crocker, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor. The city budget is written to capture revenue and expenses over the fiscal period. During the biennial period, changes to the budget in both revenue and expenditures need to be recognized by a budget amendment. By this ordinance, the city council would amend the twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number oh three five twenty and subsequently amended. Uh, the budget amendment before tonight reflects um everything that we discussed at our workday session last week. There have been no additional changes. Um, so I don't feel the need to go through this unless you guys have questions, um, because we discussed it quite thoroughly, um, but happy to do so. But with that, I would recommend, staff would recommend the adoption of an ordinance amending our twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget.
Councilmember Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number zero three five dash two zero and as previously amended.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Clausen, second by Councilmember Kuchardi. And Noah, just to clarify, uh, we've got item F, which is that real estate purchase and these, this amendment also captures that real estate purchase.
Correct. Yep.
Uh, questions uh for Mr. Crocker? I'm hearing none, so you'd be voting on the adoption of an ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the uh biennial, but the amendment to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget passes unanimously. We're to item D, approval of a contract with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs for lobbying services. Ms. Walz?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. So as you may recall, for several years, the city has contracted with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs to provide lobbying services for the city. Notable successes have included uh monies appropriated for the DeKalb Pier Project and as well as the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project. Um, Gordon Thomas Honeywell also provides regular updates to the council and city staff regarding legislative issues. Uh, the current contract expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. With that, they are willing to continue to provide legislative support for the council and the mayor. Uh, the agreement is before you is for a two-year term. The key terms are the same and the current contract within the current contract, except the cost has increased the first year to a monthly fee of four thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. And then the second year monthly fee will be four thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars with both expenses um for traveling expenses not to uh exceed two thousand and five hundred dollars annually. With that, staff recommends approval of the contract as presented.
Councilmember Deaner.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the contract and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for lobbying services with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs for the period of January one, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Deaner, second by Councilmember Chang. Any questions of, on this matter? Gordon Thomas and Mr. Wees have done an excellent job for us. I think our most recent success was uh last session when we got to uh one point two million dollars to help us purchase the Kitsap Bank site. So we've had a a number of successes over the years and they're, they're a uh a vital partner to us uh down in Olympia. Any, no questions or comments? All right, you'll be voting on the contract for Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs for lobbying services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract is approved. We're to item E. And it says mayor on it, so I guess I got a reading part here tonight. So adoption of a resolution approving twenty twenty-three legislative agenda. In order to lay the foundation for a successful legislative action and refunding is crucial that the city adopt a legislative agenda with ample time for the mayor, council members and our lobbyists to communicate with the city legislative delegation prior to the start of session. On June fourteenth of this year, Josh Wees and Anna, Anna Kavon with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs, the city's lobbyist, lobbyist provided a presentation on the twenty twenty-two legislative session as well as a few, as a, a few potential as legislative priorities. Discussion was held regarding the Sedgwick Roundabouts, Port Orchard Community Event Center, Closet Design, uh funding, foster pilot program, public records reform and homelessness uh and defending against mandates and local and defend local control. Therefore, the twenty twenty-three legislative uh agenda has been prepared and ready for consideration, which is very similar to last year's. Staff recommends adoption of a resolution, adopting the twenty twenty-three legislative agenda as presented. Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving the twenty twenty-three legislative agenda as presented.
Second.
I so there's a motion and a second. I think Councilmember Clausen is going to offer an amendment.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move that we amend the attached uh legislating priorities to include a section that would support the Port of Bremerton's request to the state for assistance on the Breakwater Project.
Okay, second. So they have a motion by Councilmember Clausen and a, and a second by Councilmember Kuchardi for, with an amendment to include the the Port of Bremerton's Breakwater Project. So discussion of the amendment. Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the amendment? Hearing none, the amendment has been, has been approved. Discussion of the main motion, which is the modified legislative agenda. Josh gave a pretty detailed presentation. All right, you'll be voting on the main motion, which is our legislative agenda for twenty twenty-three. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the, the agenda has been set. Now we need to go to work, Josh.
And I see on this copy of the agenda, there is that statement about supporting the W C. So
Yes.
on this one, but wasn't on the previous.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, we're to item F, adoption of a resolution authorizing the purchase of Kitsap County Parcel Number four zero two seven dash zero two three dash zero one seven dash zero 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 four for Williams, the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project. Mr. Lang, this is you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The city's right-of-way acquisition and relocation consultant, Tierra Right-of-Way Services, in conjunction with the city identified Kitsap County Tax Parcel Number four zero two seven zero two three zero one seven zero 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 four as a necessary acquisition for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project. Accordingly, the consultant has negotiated terms of a voluntary purchase of the property as well as associated relocation benefits in accordance with Resolution Number zero two eight dash one six, right-of-way acquisition procedures as amended and the city's relocation assistance program. On November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Community Development Director executed, executed the administrative settlement approval for the city's purchase of the property in the amount of six hun- seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars plus seven hundred and fifty dollars for a statutory evaluation appraisal allowance plus incidentals and closing costs subject to council approval for the purchase. The city has not yet received a settlement statement with the final amount closing cost, but estimates that those amounts will not exceed twenty thousand dollars. Please note, all expenditures associated with the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project have been identified within the project funding estimate and are grant-eligible. In April twenty twenty-two, council approved payment of relocation benefits in the form of moving and storage costs for this property owners. Recommendation is for this property acquisition and associated relocation benefits as needed for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor's execution of all documents necessary to effectuate the purchase, including but not limited to the real estate purchase and sale agreement in the amount of seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the warranty deed, the real property voucher, which includes a seven hundred and fifty dollar statute statutory evaluation appraisal, appraisal allowance, the real estate excise tax affidavit form and payment of additional associated incidentals, closing costs, escrow fees in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for an authorized total acquisition payment not to exceed seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Councilmember Chang.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of Kitsap County Tax Parcel Number four zero two seven zero two three zero one seven zero 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 four for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Chang, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. I'm happy to say this is the last overall water home. So we acquired all the homes at this point. Questions or comments? All right, it's an exciting moment.
Yeah.
And I'm certainly glad that our IT managers here in Tony's microphone tonight, it's not Tony stuttering. That microphone cuts out. We have our manager meeting on Wednesday mornings. We tell them about it and they look at us like we're crazy because they can't replicate it. Just got a thumbs up from the back room. He leaps us now. All right, we'll be voting without any further questions. We'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution authorizing the purchase of uh real property for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The purchase has been approved. We're to our last business item, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Skilling Inc. for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project. Mr. Lang, this is you again.
Thank you. The city has identified a need for professional architecture and engineering services with expertise in the design of transportation multimodal facilities to complete the design from ninety percent to a hundred percent for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway. This project includes state, local, state and federal funding. On June third, twenty twenty-two and June tenth, twenty twenty-two, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department published a request for qualifications for architectural and engineering services for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project. And by the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two deadline, the Public Works Department received one statement of qualification from a qualified firm. After reviewing the SOQ received and based upon overall qualifications of the submitting firm, the Public Works Department determined Skillings, Inc. met the requirements and criteria as described in RFQ and was a responsible and responsive consultant to provide the architectural and engineering services for the project. Public Works staff met with Skillings to discuss, clarify and develop in the project understanding and associated contract terms. On November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, the city received a defined scope of work, budget and fees from Skillings in an amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and seven s- four hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. Staff recommends adoption of Resolution Number zero five six dash two two, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute contract number C zero eight zero dash two two with Skillings, Inc. for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project in an amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and five dollars.
Councilmember Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number zero zero five six dash two two, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute contract number C zero eight zero dash two two with Skilling Inc. for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project in an amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and documenting the professional services procurement process, procedures.
Yeah, motion by Councilmember Clausen, second by Councilmember Deaner. So this process takes us from the ninety percent designs we have to a hundred percent. Gets us to an ad-ready design. Um, we had a public comment earlier asking about the segment of the pathway and whether or not we're going to raise uh the roadway and there are no plans to raise the roadway and this isn't an area of our town that floods. We do get at high tides and stormy events, of course, waves can splash over onto the roadway, but we're, we're not experiencing any, any flooding and our permits that we've applied for nor our design would allow us to build any form of a seawall, uh you know, to build the road higher. Uh, so just wanted to address that since we were touching that topic here. Other questions? We're moving as fast we can to acquire real estate and uh you know, if we're lucky, maybe this summer we could get out to bid and if not, uh maybe following spring. I know, so it's not, it's not completely up to us. We've got to have, uh, we've got to close on a few more pieces of real estate and finish this design. So, Councilmember Chang?
I have a technical question and Tony may know. Is the state involved in this somehow? I was
Yeah, yes, we're following all the procedures with washed out. That way we can achieve or we can get some funding for the construction aspect of it.
We're following their standards. They're not
Right. So I have to give people the opportunity to make me recuse myself.
The state is involved in this.
Okay.
There we just, we're following their standard.
That's
But would anyone wish for Councilmember Chang to recuse himself because we're following watch dot standards? But would anyone wish for Councilmember Chang to recuse himself because we're following watch dot standards?
Yeah.
The state is when we get to construction, funding the project or a large portion of the project. But at this point, this is local dollars paying for this, isn't it, Noah?
Yes.
Yeah. So any other questions? Sorry, you can keep trying.
You know, it wasn't clear cut to me, but I thought the state's involved somehow. And I know someone somewhere may complain someday if I don't raise it. So it's just.
I just think you want to go to the back room. That's all.
Yeah, I need to get another drink of water.
Yeah.
All right. With that, you'd be voting on resolution approving a contract with Skilling's for the Bay Street pedestrian pathway project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract is approved. All right, we have no discussion items. Council committee reports, I don't believe economic development tourism met earlier this week. Utilities has not met. Finance did not meet and is not meeting in December. We're going to meet in January and talk about primarily about the city hall project. Then, of course, then year end fund balances and and all of those things. So we'll see everybody in January for that. Transportation was tonight and it was canceled. I don't believe they have a December meeting either.
Right.
Um, festival of chimes and lights. Are we going to have one?
We certainly are, just in about a week and a half.
Okay.
We have the brochures now and we've been advertising all along. So please make yourselves available, show up December third. Our tree lighting is at five thirty. Name stage is five o'clock for council members if you're available. And we're moving forward with a Scottish Christmas. There will be a big piper and there will be Highland dancers and lots of music and festivities. And we're honoring Terry Bonciger this year. Somebody who most of us are very familiar with and for his service to Port Orchard. And there you have it.
Okay, we'll see it at the Christmas tree soon. And the public works is working hard to get all those lights up and the tree up. So we're all ready for this event.
And stay lit.
Right now. All right, and the chimes too. We've got that working. It was a challenge, but we've got it. We were having chime problems. It was there. So we've got it. Lecter's has got it resolved. They N I T. All right, Lantius, did you guys meet?
We met on the sixteenth. We had eight agenda items. I'll go through those pretty quickly.
Okay.
The first one was about temporary commercial signage in the right away. That's something that D C D has been looking at for a little while. The approach to permitting, if any, has got to be somewhat judiciously approached because of First Amendment issues. And so D C D is taking the tack of building a record that would support any permitting that comes into play. The next item was the survey that's prepared for the housing action plan that's going out in utilities. I don't know if if those have begun to go out yet or not, but in our utility statements, people will see that their surveys that they can respond either online or with a QR code. And it basically is asking people what sort of housing issues they've faced or observed. It also will be available through Facebook and email. So the audience will be potentially or probably bigger than just our utility users, but nonetheless will be pretty informative and mostly will be our utility users. The next item was the multi-family tax exemption and D C D taking a relook at that. The benefits to the users and the tenants have kind of grown out of proportion with each other, particularly with the more rapid increase in rates, housing rates than income. So D C D is looking at that and will be making some recommendations for further considerations. One of the things that we've talked about in years past is how to audit those programs to make sure that they're performing as we expect them to and that as we've discussed in the past, that's a pretty complicated effort that we don't have the time to do, but we're hoping that the housing action plan survey, sorry, document will address that and come up with some ideas for us. So stay tuned on that. The next item, item number four was McCormick Woods wanting or McCormick Development wanting to design and dedicate a court sports along McCormick Village Drive. So on the backside of the existing park out there, looks like there's room for parking and a couple more sports courts and they would like to design and then dedicate that construct and dedicate that to the city. Probably pickleball courts is what seems to be pretty popular these days. So then the next item was just an update on annexation with the county. The county missed its deadline to communicate with the city by August. And so we're moving forward with presumption that we're not going to be doing any annexations and that we can pick that up after the comp plan of two thousand twenty-four. The next agenda item was that development activity report that our presentation that that Nick prepared, which is pretty staggering. And then we talked about no December meeting. And then there was one item that was added, which was a brief discussion about the pantry boxes or the giving boxes. And I think there was one that Fred noticed had been removed or asked to be removed on Sydney and we weren't sure what the circumstances behind that were, whether it was in the right way. So anyways, looking into that for the next meeting. And that was it. Anything to add, anybody?
Well, Nick wrote that he asked everyone in code enforcement and public works and no one knew anything about the issue. So the issue was there was a pantry in the seventeen hundred block of Sydney and the owner reported that they were approached by someone telling that they needed to move it, remove it, or they would get a letter and a fine. And I just asked for more information about it and it doesn't appear there was a letter, but we also don't know who spoke to them.
Okay. First I've heard of it. Thank you for your report. Okay, on to the mayor's report and it's brief. So I just want to, we had a comment about RVs and you know, we don't allow RVs anywhere on our right away overnight, that is. And if they're legally parked, that's fine. But once they exceed you know, however long they're allowed, whatever parking zone they're in, they get a ticket just like anyone else. So it is, it is a challenge and a problem, the RVs that move around throughout the city, but as long as they're drivable and obey traffic laws and are parked no longer than is allowed. There's really not much we can do about them. If they're parked on private property, that's another matter. That's a trespass and that can happen in our shopping centers. We saw that in tractor supply here more than a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, and we helped them educate them what they needed to do to trespass the individuals. And then our police department was able to to help in that situation. So we're here to help if we can, but you know, if they're operating vehicles, they have the right to be on our roadways too. So reminder of the legislative agenda, November third legislative reception. Sino, November thirtieth. I know many of you have signed up. If you haven't, want to attend. Talked to Brandy and she'd love to help you out. As I'm required to report personal policy changes. Debbie and her crack staff are constantly reviewing job descriptions and updating them and making them relevant. And this go around, it was the city engineer and the assistant city engineer have been updated. So I'm reporting that to you. And then I sent you an email earlier today about the opioid settlement and the the money that's coming into the county. The county Jefferson, Qualum and Kitsap, I believe, the three counties that the counties are at least are partnering with Salish Behavioral Health Services. And so we have the opportunity to go our own direction. I'm not advocating that we do. I think we should enter into an I O with I L A with their contract with Salish Behavior Health Services too. Just wanted to bring that up before I direct to our staff to work with county staff to to work on a contract to make that happen. So. Okay, that's it for the mayor's report. Department heads. Tony, got anything for us?
Sure. Has the LC of some water bottles in front of you? I had a few left over from when I had them made for staff at the shop for the summer. That was from the recommendation of your utility manager that noticed that you guys were drinking a lot of bottled waters that she would prefer you use the city provided water in your flask. So happy to announce that Jeff Heglund, the new operations manager started on Monday. So we're hoping to get him up to speed here in the next few weeks. And there's a lot to process. So we're happy to have him. Also let you know there's King Tides scheduled for this week, especially with the inclement weather throughout the long weekend. So we're getting road closures prepped and detour routes just in case. And we'll have people coming in to monitor it. Really depends on if the weather cooperates. They're generally from six to eight in the morning and then we're out of the, out of the darker out of the, whatever you want to call it after that. So hopefully the weather cooperates and we don't have to close Bay Street down or notify the treatment plant that we have to, you know, send them some water to keep the businesses from flooding. So.
It's really only a major issue when we get heavy rain like we got today. There's no place for the water to go. So then
Correct.
It causes a serious problem.
We're anticipating and we'll have a crew on scene to take care of that if it happens. Thank you.
What about Leopard Street?
Uh, Leopard Street is paved. The only thing that is not accomplished, there is a couple outstanding items associated with the contract. But pavement markings will not be completed until spring of next year.
Yeah. So we got, we were really concerned. We weren't going to get that last lip asphalt done and the weather cooperated last week and the road is finally done. So go drive down it. It's it's a very nice. Noah, got anything besides budget?
Uh, I was gonna lead off with budget again, and this kind of just want to thank the council for you guys' work over the last six months to get the twenty-three, twenty-four budget adopted and following your priorities and goals and all the good projects we got in there for Tony and his crew to develop. And it's a, it's a good budget. It's a big budget, but that was a lot of work. So I thank you guys for your work and your efforts in that. And then the other thing is just mentioned that, hey, I'm really thrilled to have a new IT manager come on board with Sean. I'm glad he could come tonight and say hello. We're gonna miss Steve, but we're wishing him well in his retirement and I don't think I'm able to get him to come say goodbye. So I want to thank Steve on record for his work for the city and all the paths he took us forward and expect Sean to can pick up that ball and see to push even further as we grow. So two big announcements.
Steve lives here in the city too. He's not, he's going to be one of my appointments coming up, probably the design review board. So Charlie, you have anything for us?
I do not. Thank you so much.
Debbie?
I do have a couple items tonight. Looking for council direction on a couple items. One is an email I sent you earlier today. I did some salary research at your request on council member pay. So we have those numbers in and I'm just wondering if you want that to go to your finance committee or what to watch your next step to be with that.
I would like to pose that it goes to the finance committee first and come with a recommendation to the council. That'd be acceptable.
Any objections to that? Okay, Noah can add that to the committee agenda for January.
Okay. And the second one is that we implemented and I apologize, I don't recall the timeframe early in two thousand twenty-two, I believe. A COVID vaccination requirement for all new employees and we've been fulfilling that requirement as new employees are coming on board. The state of emergency from the state level has now closed. I just want to keep that on your radar. I don't know when we might want to talk about whether or not we want to lift that requirement for new employees. If we do at all. So I just want to put that on your radar as well.
Charlie, what are your other clients doing? Are you seeing any action on this? Not really. Okay.
You mean as far as rescinding?
Yeah.
Um. King County has not yet. None of my, well.
I would say just your, twenty-five percent would be grabbing the air and have rescinded at this point.
Have you, well, we wouldn't know because we put it as a requirement for our app right on our application. So we wouldn't know if it's preventing us from hiring.
I hear an occasional anecdotal story. Again, as I reported a couple of months ago, not on what our applicant numbers are great. We're getting, oh, Sean's a perfect example. We're getting great quality applicants that want to come to work here. I do hear some anecdotal stories preliminary in the police world. Now officers who might want a lateral to us, but don't want the COVID vaccination.
And I would caveat that number based on the those that did enact. So those were primarily in King County. So of the group that have enacted, I would say about twenty-five percent, but majority of smaller agencies that I've worked with or that I'm aware of did not enact a provision. Or apartment.
That don't have this policy that we have. That's right. Okay. All right. So any thoughts or maintain the status quo? Councilmember Rose Pepe?
My personal, this is my personal feeling is that I'd like to maintain the status quo right now for two reasons. One, we seem to be getting good applicants, which I think is beneficial. Two, if you've been watching the number on COVID flu and R S V, which is now affecting adults just as well as kids. I think that it'd be prudent to maintain that right now. I think we could look at it a little bit, maybe in spring, but not through winter right now.
No, I just recently attended a conference and there was a message going around of a number handful of people that got COVID at the conference. So fortunately.
Super spreader of events.
Yeah, well, I don't know. It was a, it was a national event, so I'm not certain. Views are the same as many of us. So anyway, all right, I think we've got some direction that maybe we'll revisit this in the spring.
I appreciate that very much. And lastly, just happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Likewise.
Double gubble. And Brandy?
I don't have anything to say other than happy Thanksgiving as well.
Any words of advice from the IT department since they're here? No, shaking his head no. All right, with that, good of the order.
Here I have a request. When you reference the issue of council member wages, there is the normal process that is used that the council will establish those wages and then they don't go into effect until the person is reelected into that position. But I understand that there is possibly another method for which you make a council adjustments and it has to do with the salary review committee or some citizens committee. I was wondering if the attorney could possibly research that, provide that information to the finance committee when we talk about.
Yeah, we can, we can provide that information. Think it would take amending our code to allot for that, wouldn't it?
The creation of a salary commission would be something that would be codified in your, and I do believe though, even through a salary commission, you're still facing that same timeline as far as enacting a salary modification. And I don't know if that was what you meant by a way to circumvent, but.
I was under the impression that because of citizens group that they could implement it almost immediately. And I think Bainbridge Island just recently went through that process. So that's why I'm asking to have some research going on.
Absolutely.
What are the issues related to it? What's the pros and cons? And then we can talk about it when we talk about.
Yeah, perfect.
All right, we'll get that information to for our January finance committee.
Oh, go ahead. Did you have something more?
Well, I was just going to wish everyone a happy Turkey Day.
Couple gubble.
Scott, yeah, well, just following on the, on the last discussion about salaries, Bainbridge Island seems so out of whack that I see we've got an average, but it would be nice to have an average without them skewing that. So that was just.
It's a thousand forty-nine dollars if you take them out. That's the average.
I knew it was going to be less than eleven hundred.
Sean did the math.
I will.
If you take out the min and the max, it's about eleven hundred and twenty dollars.
I figured right around eleven hundred.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, our meeting is adjourned. Oh, I guess we'll back up here. We have a second citizen comment period. Sir, would you like to comment this evening?
I have no comment.
All right. And anyone online wishing to comment?
Is he still on?
Still there.
Oh, yeah. Nick, are you still there? Okay, Nick, do you have a director's report?
Well, I was going to answer Councilmember Kuchardi's question that the presentation included four thousand two hundred and twenty-four new units of housing, which if you deduct to the future phases of McCormick West and a couple of the projects which are either completed or are are still in the early phases of permitting, that's about twenty-nine hundred units of housing for seven thousand additional people in the city.
Thank you. Thank you. It's sobering.
It's sort of twenty. All right.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah. All right. So any citizens online, Brandy?
One and then one employee.
Okay, then if you wish to address the council, use the raise your hand feature and we'll gladly bring you on. Hi, hearing. I hearing none, I'll close the second citizen comment period. Now I'll adjourn the meeting. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks. Happy Thanksgiving. Are we supposed to take this? Are we supposed to leave it on here?